For roll call. The board electronically takes roll call and everybody has logged in. We do have a quorum, so we will continue. I need a motion for approval of the agenda as presented.
I move approval as presented.
I second. Call the question. Motion passes. The next item is the reading of the school district mission statement. Deb, would you be able to read that for us tonight?
Sure. The Brookings School District prepares all learners to be confident, engaged citizens, empowered to impact the ever-changing and interconnected world.
Thank you, Deb. Next item is conflict of interest declarations. Are there any waivers to present tonight?
We have no conflict of interest waivers to present this evening.
All right, the next item up is comments from the audience. Have signatures to speak tonight. All right, thank you. We're gonna follow a similar protocol to how we did on Thursday. And I would just ask your forgiveness if I mispronounce anybody's names because I did not do a decent job last time. So I am sorry, I will do my very best. I am going to go through some rules again tonight, just in case anybody wasn't here with us last time. Individuals will be called upon to speak one time during the night. Individuals will not be able to defer their time to others. If you have signed up to speak, we are interested in hearing your voice. Each individual will have five minutes, which will be indicated on the timer. And this is a time for public testimony, and as such, the board is here to listen. This is not a time intended for debate. The chair will utilize the privilege of calling breaks if needed periodically. And this is live streamed, so we do ask genuinely that there would be no profanity and no yelling, please. All right. The first name on our list to speak tonight is Jason Bose.
One that says push?
There you go.
All right, hear me now? Okay, I want to do a follow-up on last Thursday's meeting. Mr. Fishback gave some really kind words to us, the Bobcat backers, and didn't have an opportunity to get him back there. Now he's not here, so I wanted to just say thank you, but as you all know, it takes a team to get anything done, to accomplish anything that's worthy. It takes a great group of team members. And we have nine board members on our Bobcat backer group. And I know some of them probably wouldn't appreciate me announcing who they are, but they are a great group of people, parents in the community, very concerned or very enthusiastic on supporting all of our youth. And it's a tremendous team, I want to give a huge shout out and again, thank Mr. Fishback in particular, but all of you for all the kind words towards the backers. And I want to use this time to talk about the upcoming events that we have. This week, we have a soccer feed on September 16th from 4:30 to 6:30 out there at the Fishback Soccer Complex. It's gonna be pizza of some sort, I don't have those details. And then on Friday, September 17th, there's gonna be a brat feed out there from 5:00 to 6:30 out there, Dana J. Dykhouse, before the football game. So again, that's Thursday, September 16th, 4:30 to 6:30 at the soccer game. Friday, September 17th, from 5:00 to 6:30 at the football game for brats this week. We have some very generous sponsors that are helping out with that. Next week, homecoming week, we have a soccer feed on Tuesday, September 21, again, 4:30 to 6:30. Again, that'll be pizza. Cross-country, we have a feed on Thursday, September 23rd. There'll be pulled pork sandwiches, I'm not sure about a time on that yet, but the Facebook page will, when we get that nailed down, we'll have that. Then we've got volleyball that same night, September 23rd. We got something special in mind, you have to show up to the volleyball game to find out what that is. And then on Friday, and I forgot to mention it last time, I was in a hurry to get here last time, but we have a homecoming parade, which everybody's really excited about. And thank you, Mr. Jewett, for putting that together. That starts at 3 o'clock, I believe. So we need to get lots of entries into the homecoming parade. Last I heard, I think we got 25 to 30, something like that with the band and everything, so should be fun. And then at 5 o'clock on Friday, September 24, 5 o'clock to 6:30, homecoming football game or feed. The feed is from 5:00 to 6:30, it's at the southwest corner, the ticket booth out there. And we just encourage everybody just to show up and support the Bobcats and bring lots of spirit and get ready to get loud. Some things we've also done, logistically, every sport is different, but this fall, we have boys golf, girls tennis cheer and dance, and we have provided them with a tote full of energy bars and Gatorades or PowerAids or whatever stuff for them to, for their season. So really looking forward to this fall. It's already going by quick. So again, it takes a team, it takes a village to get anything done. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next up is Bradley Walker.
I notice that my topic is on the agenda tonight, so I'm in my, in the right place commenting here, or do I wait until later?
Yeah, this is perfect.
Last week, I discussed the factors needed to move from one phase to another in your new revised plan. You still haven't set any solid parameters for doing so. So I'm gonna focus on the cases in schools. What percentage of students would have to be infected to move to a higher stage? 10%? 5%? 1%? If you say 10%, would be the number to have to move to a higher phase, that would require 340 students to be infected. You have 3,400 students approximately, right? So if you say 10%, that would require 340 students to be infected. 5% infection rate would be 170 students. 1% would be 34 students. I looked at your dashboard today, currently there are 16 cases in the school district. So you can see that there's currently less than one-half of 1% infected. So you want to force everyone to wear a mask for less than a 1% infection rate in the If you say 5%, then you move up, then when does it come back down? I believe Mr. Fishback talked, touched on this a little bit last week also. How do you determine, once you move to one stage, when is appropriate to return to phase, say you move from phase one to phase two, how do you determine when you're going to return to phase one? So would it have to drop back down below the, we're saying, 5% number? So with that being said, I see no current reason, no reason with the current case levels the way they are, any need to move out of phase one. And I don't think any move should be made until these definitive parameters are established. As I said, currently, you have less than one-half of 1% of your student population infected with the virus. Second point I made last meeting that I'm still seeking clarification on is where do you get the authority to force a medical treatment onto anyone? How do you have the right to tell someone that they have to wear a mask? You people aren't doctors, I don't see any reason why wearing a mask can be forced on anyone. Anybody can wear a mask if they want to. Forcing people to do something that's technically unproven to do anything but cause more harm to children doesn't make sense to me. Anyway, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Heather Ortiz.
I have a couple of things to speak on, and I have children in Brookings High School. What is a school board? Well, you are supposed to be community leaders who listen to its citizens and to its students. You are supposed to suggest ways to manage only certain areas of the school and its plans. You have no place to implement mandates. Mandates aren't laws, and you are definitely not the law. You are civil servants voted in by the citizens, these parents behind me. You don't get to have your own views, be a part of any decision this board makes. You do not have authority over staff or students, and you cannot implement policies that you establish. Your job, your job, is to advocate for education and for the safety of our children. Your job is to respond to these citizens' inquiries and questions and concerns. That's your job. I have a concern with what's going on at the high school, so here's my inquiry. Did you know that the high school US history class is watching CNN in the classroom? Is the school board okay with that? CNN is owned by Jeff Zucker. Jeff Zucker is tied to the Clintons and Kamala Harris directly by funds that he has provided to them and has complete control over CNN, as well as other entities. CNN is at the top of the list for the most Democratic political ads. It airs a whopping 22,919 Democratic political ads during its showings. CNN is the biggest brainwashing tool that the Democrats have, and I will not have my child watch that in school. And other parents should not allow it either and be upset about it. Did the school board also know that there was a weapon brought into the high school? A taser was used on other students in the hallway by a young female student. This is dangerous and should be taken seriously. And I don't feel like the school cared about how parents might feel about this incident. I have information from an eyewitness that it took three staff members, three, one of them very large, to take this girl down. Did the school district send out any notices to families or any emails? I didn't get one. I know other parents that didn't get any. This is not the first time this district hasn't notified parents of ongoings and wrongdoings that are dangerous to our students, and this is not okay. Parents need to be informed of what's going on with their children and what is going on at the campus site that they're at. I'm going to further address that the police officer at the high school has been labeled useless and isn't in the hallways between periods and has only been seen during lunch. I have been told by many students that he is not there when they need him. So I would like to know what the school district is going to do about that. How are you going to correct that situation? And I would like an answer on that eventually. Our children need to be safe while at these schools, your schools, and in the hallways. That is your job. Biden's new orders of mask mandates and pushing test kits and vaccines has everyone on edge and upset. Most parents don't want any of these mandates in the district. I would like to know if the district is going to implement mask mandates. How about testing with the rapid school tests that he's pushing? Did you know that rapid antigen tests are, quote, "more likely to miss active COVID cases and are typically not reliable"? Not reliable, straight from the CDC website. And last but not least, would this school district and the board require vaccines for our middle schoolers and high schoolers? I want to know. Other parents want to know. We do not want any of that stuff in our schools, on our children, or in our students. You have no right, no trained staff or medical knowledge to implement such horrible acts. And if you poorly choose to approve these policies, Mr. Superintendent, you force these practices into our schools, and I personally do not give you, the school, the principal, nurse, staff, front desk staff, teachers, or aides permission to touch my child or administer anything. This brings me to my main discussion, the point I will make tonight. Brookings is the fifth-largest homeschooling city in South Dakota. Over 200 families do not want indoctrination and mandates forced upon their children. Most states receive 45.6 state funding and 45.3 local sources. So on average, a district receives 8% to 10% of federal funding. How much federal funding do you get per kid here? It's around $6,000. You have 3,503 students enrolled in your school district right now. That's over $21 million in federal monies, and you are losing out a million and a quarter of that for homeschool. I know between my family and one other, you stand to lose another $36,000.
Oh, I'm sorry, your time is up. Thank you. Alan is up next.
I'm gonna continue on my wife's. We will fight you, we better believe we will fight you, and we will encourage parents and children to stand up to you and to have a voice and to be heard and have their freedoms respected. We will encourage other types of schooling in the city if we have to. There are others and many others that feel the same. So I ask the school board, how many kids is it going to take being pulled out of the school district before the board and this county realizes? We are done, we are fed up, and we do not support evil Democratic and Communist ways. We believe strongly in our morals and values and enforce our freedoms. School board, I implore you, we need you to hear us tonight. We need you to do your job and take our inquiries and concerns seriously. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Annette Gibbons.
Evening. And I came here pretty much unprepared, but I'm going to speak to you with words from my father-in-law. I have been an adult member of this community from the time I left home to come to school here at SDSU. And I left a few years to work out in the western side of the state. But I came back here, met my husband, raised my children, so I do have three Bobcats as a result of this school system, and very proud of the education they received. To those of you that know my father-in-law, Harry Gibbons, your life is enriched because of it. My life was also greatly enriched by having him as my father-in-law. A mentor to me when I lost my own father, before my children were born, he was a mentor to my children as I grew up. They spent time with him each and every day. And not in the classroom, maybe a couple of times as a substitute teacher, but he was also the manager at the pool, so he touched many, many lives. His life was not an easy life. He probably shouldn't have survived birth, born premature. He probably shouldn't have survived an accident that happened when he was in grade school, where he ripped open his leg and had gangrene, but his mother would not let the doctor amputate his leg. He probably shouldn't have survived the Korean War, but he did. So I appeal to you, those of you that know Harry and those of you that don't, I think, what would Harry say, what would Harry do? And I know with my heart that he would do the right thing for his children. He always did the right thing for children. He mentored children who did not have the father that shouldn't, that should have been in their lives when they were growing up. He was famous for his South Hall gang in the high school. He was the one that was there early in the mornings to listen to those children and provide the role model they so desperately needed. So as, as I imagine what he would say if he saw the situation with COVID, he wouldn't have much time for this nonsense. We are locking ourselves down for a virus, we are putting masks on our face for a virus, we are forcing vaccines on people for a virus. Oh my gosh, if he lived his life that way, he never would have left his basement. That's certainly not how he lived his life. He also knew tough love, and he demonstrated that to people. But people knew how much he cared about them, and he would always do the right thing for children. So those of you that don't know me, I've been a very quiet, shy person all my life. That's not who I am now. I will always speak for the children and do the right thing for the children. Do not put masks on the children. I spoke to you before, not only is it wrong, it's federally wrong. There are laws. The masks, the vaccines, the mandates that we've lived through with this COVID virus, these are all based on emergency use authorization. There is no emergency. Look around you. Why did people die? People died because they weren't treated. Why are doctors in our own community still told not to treat people with ivermectin and hydroxychloroquine? Why? I want to know why people were sent home and told to come back when their lips were There's something very wrong in our society right now, and it's time that we all stand and turn things right. We'll all be judged for how we care for the ones that are most vulnerable in our society. So the children and the elderly, they have, they have me at their back. I will always stand for the children, I will always stand for the elderly who are not protected. Those of us in the rest of the groups, we can fend for ourselves. I ask people to do the right thing. We'll close with just a short prayer. I just want to say a prayer of protection over anyone who may be struggling to fight a private battle. I love you, I pray you for your peace, for your spirit, and for your heart. So I don't know what's behind people's decisions of why they would support these mandates. I can only imagine, my guess would be that they are either threatened or bribed. Either one would sit very well with me. At the end of the day, we each get to go home, put our heads on our pillows.
Thank you. Next up, Bunny Christie.
Dr. Willert and school board members, my name is Bunny Christie, and I have a child in the Brookings School District. I'm here to urge you to reconsider your vote on the Bobcat Trax Plan from Thursday last week. That plan is faulty and does not contain verbiage for a pandemic and did not include input from staff or local health care experts. Please return to the 2020 Bobcat Trax Plan as it was left at the end of the school year back in May. It is shocking that you would be swayed by comments from non-medical persons and are hearing misinformation. Not only did someone quote from YouTube, hardly a reliable medical source, especially without .gov or .edu at the end, but we had people encouraging you to vote for the new plan based on politics because South Dakota is a red state. You also asked that the administrators send out a survey to the staff, which has yet to be complete. Teachers, please, if you're watching tonight, look for emails in your mailboxes that will be shared with the board. People are concerned that the teachers will not be heard or the information be made transparent to the public. You have 17 new cases listed as positive on today's dashboard. That equates to potentially 119 others that are currently incubating the virus and unknowingly spreading it. According to Dr. Malmberg last week, some people refuse to test their children, or they don't even come to the clinic because they don't want their children to miss out on something at school. I imagine how many more you might have without knowing because those kids aren't being tested. Please reconsider the adopted plan and replace the plan that worked last year. Thank you.
Hey Bunny. All right, that concludes our portion for public comment. Next up will be our best awards. I'll turn it over to Dr. Willert.
Well, board members, you know that this is always a highlight for us and an opportunity to celebrate the success of our staff and our students, and tonight is no exception. And again, for those that aren't familiar, we initiated a process a couple of years ago to recognize outstanding achievements of our students and staff within the district and even community members from time to time. And we established what was called the Best Award, and it stands for Bobcats exhibiting success and triumphs. And it's a recognition, again, as it states, to recognize outstanding achievements, accomplishments, and times when individuals overcame some very challenging situations and circumstances. And this evening, I'm excited to recognize Alexa Cap as a recipient of the Brookings Best Award. She's a music teacher at the Mickelson Middle School, and as the nomination reads, last spring, Mrs. Cap took on the challenge to do something awesome for a student at the Mickelson Middle School. Ella was one of her students battling cancer, and another student went to Mrs. Cap with an idea to sing a song for Ella. Mrs. Cap, again, being a music teacher, ran with the idea, organized the 7th and 8th grade choirs to create a fantastic video to help a young girl doing what is certainly an unimaginable time in her life. Thank you, Mrs. Cap, for doing something great for our students at the Mickelson Middle School and for being truly a great example of a team player who's dedicated to our students, both in the classroom as well as out. So again, congratulations, Mrs. Cap, for your outstanding accomplishments and for being one of Brookings Bests.
Next item up is Chad Adamson. He will be sharing the search survey information with us. Thank you, Chad.
And board members and audience members, as Mr. Adamson comes forward, we have conducted the search survey, and I don't want to take too much of an opportunity here. I believe, now this is the third time, Mr. Adamson, is that?
Six.
Six, six times, all right. Third time in recent history, probably, but it's really an opportunity to gauge what's going on with our youth within our community, an opportunity to identify areas for celebration. There's certainly some of those, but just as importantly, if not more importantly, opportunities for improvement and ways that we as a community can respond to some of the needs of our youth as a collective group. So I'm excited this evening to introduce Mr. Adamson. He has a champion for our youth in so many ways, as so many of our teachers are, and he's really been, he's been a champion to carry forward the search survey process and then follow up within our community as a whole. And I just can't say enough to celebrate what Mr. Adamson has done, and I'm excited to have him here this evening to share this information. So again, thank you, Chad, for joining us.
And thank you, Dr. Willert, for the compliments, and board for allowing me to come and have some time to just share this information out. It is fairly intense information when we get to the end of it, and that's where I wanted to make sure that we had some opportunity to at least kind of develop, have some awareness of what's going on with our teenagers. And so like I mentioned, this is the sixth time that I've helped with this effort in the 23 years. the 23 years that I've been here. We use an anonymous survey that has about 160 questions from the Search Institute, basically focusing on what are the strengths that our teenagers have in the sixth through 12th graders, and then what are the deficits that could get in the way of healthy development? And then just kind of getting a general picture of what our teenagers are going through in our community. And so when I helped with the very first one in 1999 and then 2002, we took that data and we used it to help get a Boys and Girls Club started for Brookings County, and then also a skate park at the high school and different activities like that. And so there's been that continued effort through all of this to, to continue to grow the Brookings community and the county as a whole. This last spring, when we surveyed in April, we had 1,355 students who participated in this, and so that's where the data is coming from. Then this summer, what we did was we had a couple committees from the middle school. Michelle Adamson is a wellness teacher. Matt Christie is a math teacher. Rochelle Brecht, a science teacher at the middle school. The high school group was Randy Hartman, a new counselor up there, Jane Hyer, a science teacher. Elizabeth Taylor was special ed representative, and then Linda Johnson, another school counselor, and then Michelle Vanderweer from administration. And so we looked through this data, and so the presentation that I have here is kind of that longitudinal look at what did our last three times look like. And so basically, to start out with, though, to kind of give some vocabulary to this, the Search Institute has done about 40 years of research in looking at what does it take for a student to grow up and be successful? And so the external assets, there's 20 of them that they've identified, that those are the positive developmental experiences that surround the youth. So that is the family, the school, the community, religious activities, those types of things that we're looking at providing. The internal assets, like it says, the young person's own commitment, values, and competencies. So basically, that fabric of their personality, what they develop, and so there's 20 of those that we look at. And then the deficits are those countervailing influences that can interfere with that healthy development. So just the, the kind of risk-taking behaviors that teenagers get into that can get in the way of successful development. And so the 20 external assets are divided into four subgroups. The first subgroup has these six things in it. And so basically, just a quick review of where we were four years ago when I presented, we'd kind of taken a break in there, and so we went back, kind of compared the 2006 and 2009 numbers to put those together, and then looked at about a decade later in the 2017 numbers. And so that's that second column up there, and then that last column is what we've added now for our 2021 effort here this last spring. And so pretty much what our group has done is looked at an asset that has changed by more than about 6%. And all these numbers, just to kind of review that real quick, the number up there is a percentage of our student body who says, yes, they have this asset. And the assets are usually one to four questions, usually on a Likert or a frequency scale, frequency range, and then they're combined to figure out if a student has that asset or not. And so when we look at what has happened over time, we want to see if there's positive growth, more students having these assets, or if there's been a decline. And so when we commented on this four years ago, we knew that the social media and the smartphones and everything the teenagers were getting into and looking at other research data had really interfered with that positive growth and connection with community, connection with family. We knew that there was probably going to be some data revealed here from what the pandemic has kind of caused in student life. And so just knowing that they haven't been able to participate in community activities, youth resources, other services that they're able to provide. And so you can see numbers that are in yellow are ones that have decreased by 6% or more. And then ones that have increased by 6% or more are in a green, so it's a positive growth. And so because I want to quickly get to the concerning data, I'm kind of going through this fairly quickly. My efforts through the next year then is to go out and present this to the United Way, who helped pay for this effort, and then like the Boys and Girls Club Board, the Boys and Girls Club staff, and I go out to a lot of different places to share this information and see how we can bolster all these efforts that we have for developing assets. One of the other ones that we see there's a decrease in is the youth programs have a big drop, and then the religious community, we just know that there was a lot of time lost in being able to go to those because of the pandemic. And so looking at internal assets, we see that the achievement motivation has dropped a little bit, so we're going to keep an eye on that one at the school district. When I presented four years ago, there was a newspaper article, and Search Institute actually saw some of our comments in there that we were hoping that the survey could be updated. And so with our comments and their effort, they did change a few questions. One was outdated is, do you bring your books to class? Well, when we all went one-on-one with computers and just less carrying books, they had changed the question to, do you feel interested in what you are learning at school? And so that's where that, there was a big change in that data there. Ones that we want to continue to watch and see, that bonding to school question had a significant drop, and so we know that's just the way that school has offered over the last 18 months has potentially interfered with that. And then just as more and more are looking at doing different varieties of learning, that one has dropped. One that we had seen a lot of positive growth between the, you know, kind of a decade ago to the 2017 were the positive values, looking at that caring, integrity, honesty, responsibility. One that we saw a decrease and basically goes back to the 06, 09 numbers, but is that restraint? And so that's basically a question, is it, it's against my values to drink, and it's against my values to have sex? Are those types of questions there? So that's something that our health teachers can look at, our advisors, our coaches, and we can help see kind of where that might be coming from. Another one that has changed for a positive growth is the cultural competencies, and I know we have a lot of efforts between the community and campus and different focuses in our, in our school. And so that one shows a nice positive growth there. Moving on to probably our biggest concern, though, and we didn't have these in yellow four years ago because they hadn't all met that mark of dropping by 6%, but that just kind of overall mental health piece, where we have the personal power, self-esteem, sense of purpose, positive view of the future have all dropped again now quite a bit. And so we're going to have some pull-out slides that kind of separates where our concerns are at with these. But when we look at our longitudinal data over the six times that we've taken it, basically out of the 40 assets that they, the Search Institute recommends that a student have, we're at about half of them. And so we had that nice, you know, probably high mark at the 21 in 2006, and then again in 2017. I probably would have, in our group, looking at this, probably would have anticipated it had dropped more, so we've been pleased that we didn't lose as many assets as we thought we might. When we look back, we're not allowed to look at all of the search survey numbers from across the nation, and they have done it internationally also, but the, what I've found is usually an average youth has about 17 out of the 40 assets. And so we've always been pleased that Brookings is higher than, than the national numbers. One of the things that we have always looked at, and they ask us to, to view, is that you want as many assets available in a, in a student as possible. And so then they break it down by, the students in the blue category would have 31 to 40 assets, and then the green is the 21 to 30, the yellow is 11 to 20, and then the red is the 0 to 10. And so as we can compare four years ago to now, there was a shift in about 3% in each of those categories, kind of for the, for the negative. The overall premise, and it's, I have a prop here that I didn't put in the PowerPoint, but basically, our average middle school students and high school students have right around that 21. And so when you take a look at what the external ones are, that foundation, that framework that we as a community provide, and then they grow their internal assets up through that, basically a mesh that is their resiliency is another way that we talk about it. And so the stuff that can gets through there, you can see the holes in this one. I'll hold it up for the audience to look at also. The more assets we can give, the stronger their personality and strength will be in the resiliency. So just a visual concept of what resiliency is. And so with that goal of trying to get most students in that 31 to 40 asset, if we have someone who's 35 assets, 17 by 18, you can see that there's a lot fewer holes in what can get through to them, or if life situations come, it's harder to be ripped apart in, in a sense. When we look at students who are in that 0 to 10, so here would be a seven asset student, three assets by four assets, easier to be ripped apart and have more things get through to, to damage and wear at their resiliency. That's basically just a quick synopsis of that overall premise of what we're looking at here. When we look at the deficits, there's five big ones. One of the biggest ones of concern would be the TV overexposure, and so that one had changed to add screen time in tablets, phones, and so we have a larger number of students who are getting that three-plus hours on school days viewing and just streaming stuff. And so that is definitely still a concern of ours. When we look at 10 high-risk behaviors, we can see there at the bottom that our depression and suicide numbers have continued to increase. And so that's probably our biggest focus of our group and our efforts, and where, as I start to present this now publicly, having the school staff look at it, like I mentioned, having the Boys and Girls Club staff look at it with us, because we're, we're not wanting to make too many predictions on, on what it is without having more eyes on this, because we don't want to blame everything on the pandemic. We know there's other things going on, and so trying to figure out where and how we address what's going on here with, with the feelings of depression and suicide. But back to like I mentioned, these numbers are all percentages of that, basically all of the sixth through 12th graders, so 33% are feeling something in this category. And if you're looking for raw numbers, that's where you can take that 33% times that 1,355 students, and then you really see what that end number is there. But to break it down, or to move on to other risk-taking behaviors, what's really nice is Brookings has gotten low and stayed low on a lot of the risk-taking behaviors. So we'll keep looking at those, but we're going to move on to thriving indicators, the big ones that the Search Institute sees. Looking at the good health, we know that we've all spent a lot of time at home and maybe haven't got the nutrition that we need, so we're going to try and figure out maybe where that is coming from also, what's going on there. We know that exhibiting leadership has gone down because we haven't had those opportunities over the last couple of years, not being able to be in the groups, and so we're going to hopefully gain some of those back now also. What we want to do is try to get as many thriving indicators as possible in each group, each category, and so this slide breaks it down, 0 to 10, 11 to 20, 21 to 30, and 31 to 40. And so our youth show what they're, they're wanting, is that that top group engages in about six out of the eight thriving indicators, and we hope to get that bottom group growing When we look at what each of these kind of subgroups look at out of the 24 risk-taking behaviors, the group that's in that 0 to 10 assets engages in about 6.6 of those 24 risk-taking behaviors, and our top group, the 31 to 40, hardly engage in any risk-taking behaviors. And so that's that overall premise and goal that we want to keep pushing and adding assets to students' lives. So now that we kind of start breaking down some of those risk-taking behaviors, we can see that sexual intercourse has dropped, and we knew that that was kind of dropping over time just because of social media, and when we looked at more and more people were staying home on Friday nights, Saturday nights, just fewer kids getting together, but then just a lot of the messages that's to, to choose to, to stay safe is part of what they're looking at there. Another big one that we've always been concerned about, and we know that this has shifted, the smoking cigarettes is something that has declined quite a bit. When you look at what has replaced it, though, with some of our comments, we were able to have them add a question about vape tobacco, nicotine, or marijuana as just one question, and this would be anytime in the last 30 days. And so that's something that we want to make sure that everyone's aware of, is that the marijuana can be used in the vaping products, and so that's what was put in the question. So when you look at the, the smoking numbers have gone down, smoking cigarettes have gone down quite a bit, I think this behavior is what has replaced a lot of that. So this will be something now, new data benchmark, we'll continue to watch and see, you know, how this will change over time also. So another one of marijuana in the last 30 days, and so when we surveyed in the middle of April, this would be going back to the middle of March last spring. And so if they, if they, you know, partook of it in any form or fashion over those 30 days, then, you know, they're self-reporting this. So it's nice to see that most of these numbers have gone down also per grade. Drinking parties is another one that has gone down. We're not quite sure when we're looking at it, that eighth grade group, so they'd be freshmen this year. Our health teachers usually catch our freshmen in class, and so that might be something that they can address with their curriculum, you know, and talk about the, what's going on there. Other things that we want to keep students safe is, you know, driving a car after having been drinking, and so it's nice to see that these numbers had gotten lower from, you know, the 06 and the 09 numbers and are staying lower. I think that message is getting out to our students. Renting a car whose driver has been drinking, I know that FCC LA and our homecoming efforts and those types of things, getting those messages out there have been good. Lot of TV ads, you know, buzz driving is drunk driving, those types of comments, so people are hearing those. I think the idea that we helped try to push through, kind of like some parents-in-pots zoom conversations and things like that also, is that if you go out and you choose to, you know, partake in beverages, more and more parents, I think, are willing to go pick up students, pick up their children so that they don't drive. And so that's a nice growth, nice message that can be done, and I know that there's more and more students who will go pick up students and drive them home. So that's been a nice shift for our community. So that's been a nice shift for our community. When we look at more than a few sips in the last thirty days, so this is another slide that looks from middle of March to the middle of April. For the most part, these numbers, most of the grades are pretty comparable to what they were four years ago. That freshman group again, like, or the eighth graders who are freshmen now, and those sophomore group or juniors this school year take a pretty good jump. So we're going to keep watching to see what's going on in those two grade levels. Another thing that we want to look at is not just kind of experimenting with it, but something that has maybe become a habit. And so this slide shows the percent who have binge drank during the past two weeks. And so some of the questions really dig down to, has it become a behavior pattern? And so when you look at fourteen nights, and the red bars at the top are ten-plus times the students reporting that, that's almost every night that they're drinking five or more drinks in a row is what the survey had a question for binge drinking. And so what we want to identify these students to maybe help with that behavior pattern that is already being set is one of the goals. And so, you know, since it's anonymous, we don't know who answered what here. And so we hope to get either them to kind of have some self-referral or their friends to help them get some help. And so that's that overall goal, is that we can catch these students before it ends up becoming a lifelong habit. Another one that we've always looked at at the past is carry tonight for gun to protect yourself in the last twelve months. And so these numbers have increased over the last ten years, fifteen years. Not quite sure what the change has been. This could be one time though, in the last twelve months. And like I mentioned, four years ago, it could be that they went to hang out with some buddies, friends, family in a different community and felt like they were going to a place that maybe they weren't going to be real comfortable with. But just something that we want to make sure that the public is aware of and families too, just that our students aren't feeling quite as safe as they probably used to. Getting to our highest concern, this one is the, you know, felt sad or depressed, most are all the time in the last month. So again, that middle of March to the middle of April. When you look at, you know, basically the eighth graders through the seniors, about three out of ten students were feeling that way last spring. And so that's something that I know that the high school counselors had talked about, seeing a high rise in students wanting to come and have conversations. Really shows and is evident in the next slide here also. Have you ever tried to kill yourself is the straight-out question. And then it's no, once, twice, or three-plus were the answers. And so this could be anytime in their lifetime, so there's no timeframe on this data. But this is where we know that our high school students have been struggling for a while, and these numbers keep going up. And so this is the biggest information I wanted to make sure that we got out there. When we dig a little deeper in it, we did a stacked bar graph here to show the gray is the people who, the students who reported once. The red is twice, and then that top, the white is the three-plus. And so like I mentioned, this is pretty intense information. Our goal is to figure out how do we respond to this and continue to do the efforts that we have, and how can we add for the community, add for the school district in these areas. To just separate, you know, the two thousand twenty-one, looking at that. Like I mentioned, the high school counselors and staff had gotten to the point where out of three and a half positions, the four counselors, they were probably talking to one student every day that was with suicide ideation. And that's something that the efforts were good, that to have those people there available. I know that we're looking at adding potentially two mental health counselors for the S R money to help us with that over the last few years. During that time, we were able to add a school social worker. And then other things that we've been able to increase is our connection with Brookings Behavioral Health and Aver Behavioral Health. So we have agency counselors who are always willing to come to the schools and have sessions with students or be willing to receive those referrals from parents or from the students themselves or from us as counselors to get in and have those services available. So as we continue to look more kind of at those trend lines also, we wanted to separate out what was going on with the males versus the females to see if it was a situation where it was one or the other. Four years ago, we were really seeing that it was a female issue. But what we're finding is as you can look at the green line for the males, they're starting to curve up fairly quickly here also. And so that was a new discovery by our team this summer. And something that we want to continue to look at is what is going on with the males here in the Brookings community. Because when you look at the last slide and this slide also switched to numbers. And so we went away from the percentages and went to numbers. When we looked at about a hundred and forty females had attempted suicide, but then we had that male number jump quite a bit, about eighty-some. And so we definitely want to find those efforts and get our trend lines going back the other direction. We know that from all the surveys from years past, our teenagers push away from adults. You know, their effort is to be social, to gain the help from their cohort. But we know that we need to make sure that our staff, our coaches, our advisors are the ones who are watching for warning signs. But one of the biggest efforts that we can also do is encourage our students to be the eyes and ears for their friends. And so I think that's going to be one of our biggest efforts, both school-wide and community-wide. And I know that we have a good group of teenagers with the Brookings Teens Care that are going to make these efforts to be the eyes and ears. We've done the Natural Helper Program at the middle school for a long time where we train students how to make those referrals. But we've also added to make sure that just all of our sixth graders here that at the beginning of the year, that they're now entering this teenage life where they're young adults and they can help a friend. And so we know that they're listening and they're taking the ideas of how to help a friend, you know, very serious. And so to try and figure out, you know, where is all this coming from? Some of it goes back to those assets of that feeling of personal power. How much do they have control over as teenagers? For the males has dropped quite a bit over time. So you can compare it to the females of where they were at. Self-esteem has dropped, the sense of purpose, and just that overall positive view of the future. And so when you look at the trend lines, right now, we still have all six different survey points on here. If we took out the ninety-nine and the two thousand two though, and you looked at what's happened just over the last fifteen years, those trend lines would be even steeper. But something that we're going to continue to look at, and like I said, we want to make sure that our trend lines flatten out and move more toward the positive on the self-esteem, the sense of purpose, positive view of the future. And that's what is probably most concerning for some of us. And what we're going to look at possibly a subcommittee for this is when the males drop all the way down now to where the females are at. Again, it's not just a female issue that we were thinking four years ago. And so we're going to make sure that we address both populations in the school district. So our overall goal is to help bolster some family assets also. Every time we've done the search survey, then we will follow up during the school year with a parent's symposium to get this information out to a larger group of families who want to come and listen and gather some ideas on how to help. And when we did it four years ago, we took all of our resources and said, please take five with you because you can come and listen, but then you can also pass those on to friends and family who weren't able to attend. And so we don't have a date set for that yet. I think one of our biggest questions and maybe some guidance from the board would be, do we have just one focused topic for our parents' symposium? Or the last one, we did three because our concern was the social media, sleep, and vaping had really hit just at the beginning four years ago. And it might be where, you know, some ideas might be to spread it out, have a couple of different types of parent symposiums also. So that's the end, the next steps. I'm open for questions at this point, I guess.
Chad, I just have, do you have copies of this? We have some teacher education students here, and I'm wondering if we could give them some.
I asked when they came in, Tracy Nelson's class is here, so I didn't bring any copies with. But Tracy Nelson sometimes asks me to come speak to her class.
Okay, because especially for their class, that would be beneficial with their health education.
Thank you, by the way. Thank you, thank you. And Van asked me to thank you as well for doing this today, but, or taking this time. You kind of shared a little bit about the committee's next step of just getting the information out. Does the committee plan to come with recommendations, ideas? Do you have ideas for getting youth solutions? Having the youth give us some ideas for solutions or... So this is like a seventeen-part question. And then just how can we help and how can we support all of this work and our students? Obviously, this is stifling for a lot of us.
Yeah, like I said, the intense information. Our goal will be to continue the Natural Helper Group, and so we always get information, share this out with them. I did present to a group of high schoolers four years ago, and, you know, they felt that the numbers, everything is very, you know, accurate here. I think one thing I failed to mention is that with the reliability and validity of it, there were, you know, about fifty cell surveys, you know, samples that were discarded either because they didn't answer, you know, enough questions, or they said that they were doing every drug every night, you know, where it wasn't a realistic sampling of a student. So question number thirteen somewhere in there. What we're going to do is, like I mentioned, present it to the staff because I think we want their eyes, their thoughts, you know, what can they do? I know that the high school is switching a lot of effort to the SRB time. And so I think there's going to be some chance to possibly have some conversation with the students in that time slot. But then also be able to provide the information back to the students types of time slots also. And so not having nailed any of that down, but those are ideas that we had talked about this summer, knowing that there's potential there.
And Chad, the Peer Helpers is a middle school program, correct?
Yes.
And is that something that we can continue at the high school? I know you said that sometimes it continues informally, but it almost appears that that'd be a great thing. I know this Brookings Teens Care that Melissa's daughter is involved with, they're sort of taking on some of those roles. But I'm wondering if that's something too that we could look into at the high school.
Yeah, I believe that's been discussed. And so finding the resources and to have them come in and do some trainings for another group of high schoolers would be great. Like I mentioned, they're our eyes and ears. And from four years ago, a lot of times as adults, we're not allowed into that social media world with them. They block us out. And so we need to have those eyes and ears there, helping kids help other kids.
So much we have been anxiously awaiting to see what this survey would produce. And it was certainly sobering for all of us, but it's information we need to see, so presenting that. Any other questions for Chad?
But we'll be in touch, Chad, because I think this is continually keep working at. We can't just look at this tonight and then not think about it. We've got to continually be updated, so thank you and thank you for all you do.
All right, some of that is really hard to hear, but we will move on to our next agenda item. Thank you. We're going to go through our committee reports now. I'll go relatively quickly. If you have something, please just jump in and share as we go through. Performance Oversight Committee.
Nothing new, I've just have been up and looked at some of the statements from the last three, four months. So I think I'm caught up for a while.
Wonderful. Facilities and Construction Committee.
Well, since the last board meeting we met, I think it was mid-August, I think it was the eighteenth. And trying to accelerate the efforts relative to the Midary and Hillcrest in terms of assessing what we have to do. Architect is working on data for us. We have some preliminary data, it's draft data. I feel that the data is there, we just need it all in one place. And I think that's what we've accomplished so far. All of you got a copy of it, it's draft, and probably won't be released in terms of, or until the committee has a chance to review it again. So this is on track. Thank you, Steve, to have joined us tonight. Mr. Jastrom is head of the architectural firm that we're working with. And so we need to keep our focus on the two projects. And of course, the parallel to this will be the financial plan as we go into finding what we need to do through these facilities in terms of improvements, replacement, whatever other words we can use to describe the process and what we need to do. So thank you again, Steve, for joining us.
Policy and Governance Committee.
Melissa and I met, and we'll be meeting again this Friday. So we have some policies we'll review tonight as far as updating. We're in the process of going through all the policies and bringing them up to date. And we received help from the Associated School Boards to help assist us with that process. So we're continuing work on that.
Human Rights Ad Hoc Committee. Negotiations Ad Hoc Committee. Global Finance Ad Hoc Committee.
Well, our focus is going to be on what our capital outlay funds are. We have a budget for this year in terms of our general fund budget, but we need to look at the capital outlay budget relative to what they brought up a minute ago in terms of the Hillcrest and Midary projects and try to... And I think coming along about November, we need to have a plan of what our financial resources are and what estimates would be relative to improving those facilities.
Mental Health Coalition.
I've attended two meetings. First was the Brookings Mental Health Coalition, and we did have a presentation from Brookings Teens Care, which is a group of middle school and high school students who are looking for ways that they can help with some of the issues that we just shared. Students that are depressed or students that need to get more engaged. And they're developing activities, one of which was held just a week ago, wasn't it, Melissa? At the park, Pioneer Park, where they had a band and they had activities for the kids to do. So get the kids involved and things like that. So there's a whole group of teens that are sort of carrying on that role at the high school and middle school. That was our program that day. And then I also attended the Brookings Resiliency Group. Brookings did receive the designation as a resilient community. But now we're looking at how do we maintain that and sustain that, and what can we do to improve? So a lot of time was spent talking about ACEs, which is adverse childhood experiences, and how that impacts our youth. And I've had the training because I'm a Brookings County Youth Mentor. But at this discussion, we want to get more people trained in ACEs. And I know a lot of our teachers have too, administrators. But we're looking at maybe how can we get the Ministerial Council, other groups, so that we're speaking the same language and that we don't use triggers that might trigger because that student has had or that child has had an adverse childhood experience, a trigger that might hurt them or upset them. So that's where we're at, and I'm just really pleased with how things are going with that.
Now it's a time for General Now, it's a time for general board member communications, if anyone has something to share?
Well, I want to go back and to my report on facilities and also add that we had a meeting relative to the bus garage with Beta and getting that back on track too.
That's okay. I would just share, Melissa, that as school board members, we have received a lot of emails, and I just want to make sure that people know we do read those. We need to get back to everybody because sometimes it may just come at an inopportune time for us and our personal schedules, but I just want to assure the public that we are reading those and we are listening to what people have to say.
Next item up is administrative reports. The superintendent will share information about events of the past month and upcoming topics.
Yes, thank you, and I'll go through relatively quickly, but again, knowing that there are a number of things that are worth mentioning and sharing. First of all, the staff survey that we had talked about last Thursday has been developed. We're going through the final edits right now of that instrument. We've received questions from board members, potential questions from board members, from BEA leadership, from administrators, and we're compiling all that. We have a survey instrument that's, like I said, final edits and will be deployed, I'm anticipating by tomorrow afternoon. We'll share that completely with everybody in a transparent and meaningful way as we often do with virtually every other survey that we've done in the district, and so we'll watch for that information to come. We'll probably keep the window open about one week so that there's ample time for everybody. It's a survey that we're issuing to all staff members and all employee groups within the district, from transportation, child nutrition, all the way through our teaching ranks as well as administrators. So, we'll have a very comprehensive view, ideally. We have asked some educational support personnel as well for feedback on the survey, so, again, trying to get a very broad picture that will give some very good information and feedback to the board. That is important because we did, in my report, you noticed that I shared that we hadn't received any ESER plan feedback. Well, actually, Friday afternoon, we did. So, while my report, which was dated on Thursday, shared that we hadn't, we have received our feedback from the state on our ESER plan. There are some things that we need to address in our plan, things like, and these are all federally-driven requirements. How do we provide for the plan to be read in another language? That's one of the things we need to have some reference in there about different aspects of how and the dates and the timelines of when we communicated the plan. So, we'll get all of those reviewed, and I'm not certain, and I know Brian Luters, the Director of Business Services, was contacting the state to see if that's going to require another approval by the board or not. So, again, we're doing our due diligence and following accordingly the rules that are put before us. There's a lot of discussion at the state level and across the entire state about the social study standards that are being revisited right now. For those that may be interested, there is a tour going across the state in a couple of different locations that they will take public comment and feedback. That first meeting is set for next Monday in Aberdeen. I believe there's one, and I don't know the exact date yet, that's been scheduled for Sioux Falls as well, so as those become available, we'll certainly keep people informed. But again, the first one is the twentieth, and it's feedback on the proposed social study standards for the state. You'll notice in my report and a couple of other principal reports, some reference to the reimagining education colloquium that the Brookings School District is part of. We actually have another series of events coming up in October that our teams will be attending. That is down in Sioux Falls, so we're excited to continue that work. And I know we have Dr. DeBates as part of that team, as a board representative, so it'll be a good conversation, again, going through and continuing that conversation about reimagining educational models. And then the October 12th board meeting, and this was not in my report, but it's something that I wanted to share with board members. We may look at proposing to you, board members, an alternative date. And the only reason that I would do that is, and not tonight, don't worry about it tonight, we're going to send out a message, but we are very fortunate to have for a second year in a row, a finalist for the State Teacher of the Year. And we found out that the State Teacher of the Year banquet and recognition event is actually the evening of the 12th. And I would really like to be there to support our Teacher of the Year, and if the board wishes, we could continue with the meeting, and I could zoom in to the extent that I could, or we can reschedule, but just wanted to let you know, I'm very excited that Stephanie Ballard is representing our region and our school district as a Teacher of the Year finalist. She's a special education teacher from Mickelson Middle School, and we have nothing but best wishes for her as she represents the teaching profession and all the great professionals that we have here in the Brookings School District going forward. So, again, that is coming up on the 12th, so stay tuned if we might propose that. And I would certainly encourage anybody to lift up Stephanie in both words of encouragement and celebration. She certainly could use that as she goes through this next step in the process. The high school report, I wanted to share just a couple of things there. You'll notice if you drive by, there is a little bit of work going on in the exterior of the building. And then, right now, there's some work happening between BEDC and the Brookings School District, and it's a partnership that's preparing for the Manufacturing Week coming up. We know that that's always a really big deal in the Brookings community. We are the second-largest manufacturer in the state of South Dakota, and we have some things that we have been partnering with them on and gathering input from some of our major manufacturers on how we can incorporate some different elements of safety and OSHA-related items, which is going to take me back, by the way, to my report. There's a couple of the things I didn't mention that I needed to, relative to safety and processes, so watch for more details. And a universal theme that you'll notice throughout the reports is staffing continues to be a challenge. I know that you've had some feedback about, well, why don't we just hire some additional teacher assistants or something like that? It is extremely difficult, and we are short on staff, we are short on substitutes. So, if there are individuals out there that are so inclined to step into that role of being a behavior technician, a teacher assistant, a transportation provider, a child nutrition worker, we need staff. And that is not unique to Brookings. It is a universal issue across South Dakota and across the entire country right now. And so alarming so, and I know Mrs. Books, Kelly Books, can share this as well, we, there are small districts that are so concerned that in the next three to five years, if staffing patterns don't change, small, small districts in South Dakota are afraid they will have to shutter their doors. We are at, I would say, an alarming state in the profession right now, and it's unfortunate that we have some of the challenges that we do with the pandemic because I think that's only punctuating the challenges that we have. I do want to take you back to my report. I didn't have this written. Again, this is information that is constantly developing and it's evolving, and I know it was mentioned somewhat in the public comments, so I think it warrants just a little bit of reference, just because I think people want to know. And we received this morning some information from the South Dakota Department of Education about the announcement that was made last Thursday night while we were meeting. You heard me reference that in my comments to the board, relative to the requirements that the President of the United States was suggesting about COVID vaccinations, et cetera. The feedback that we have thus far, and I have shared this with our legal counsel, and I'm waiting for an official opinion from them, but what we have as an understanding is because we are a local educational agency, we would not necessarily fall underneath the OSHA-specific guidelines. It's employers that employ a hundred people or more. Now, our attorney did share with me that there's still some anticipation of the rules that are being crafted about this, but the latest data that I have, and Mr. Luters and I looked at this today as well, was that as of right now, we understand that schools would not necessarily fall underneath those OSHA requirements as an educational institution, as a public education institution. Private schools, charter schools would, private employers would. So, again, that's what we have right now, and I don't have anything more to share other than that information. So, we're monitoring that very closely, and I think it punctuates, again, the ever-changing landscape of what we're facing as we're navigating the pandemic. I'm going to jump ahead now to the middle school report, and you'll notice a pretty consistent theme with the back-to-school days that we hold in the district. We had fantastic turnout by students and by parents. The back-to-school days at the middle school, out of 799 students enrolled, only five students didn't attend, so that was great to see. Then again, another celebration with the middle school teacher. There are forty-five public school educators across the country that are going to receive the prestigious California Casualty Award for Teaching Excellence, and they're going to be honored at the National Education Foundation Salute to Excellence in Education on February 11th, 2020. And I'm happy to announce that our very own Lisa Weir has been selected as one of these award recipients. So, one of forty-five across the entire country, again, another outstanding achievement and accomplishment of our fantastic teaching staff here in the Brookings School District. We heard earlier tonight about the celebration with Mrs. Cap about what she did. Well, we've had others that have reached out, and you'll notice in the Camelot report, that staff all rose to an occasion where one of the learners in the school, their family lost their home to fire, and the staff and the students rallied together to raise over $3,000 in one week for the family. And it was truly an acknowledgement of how many people working together can accomplish a great thing, and you think about what $3,000 can do for a family when they lose their home to fire. That was really an outstanding accomplishment. And then also, there's been a tribute to a fallen learner, Malu, as we all remember the tragedy within our community due to the tragic drowning. There was a tribute placed in the gymnasium. It was a spot where Malu enjoyed spending time in the Camelot gym, and there's a picture in the report that shows Malu's parents, along with the Teal Team of Teachers, which was his last team at Camelot, and how they were recognizing that's a very special place and a memorial occasion. So, if you see those individuals, please lift them up as well because, again, another great tribute. The PBIS work has been highlighted in a couple of the elementary reports. As you turn to the Dakota Prairie report, you'll notice some information. And for those online, those here in the audience, PBIS stands for Positive Behavior Intervention Supports, and it's an effort to really lay out expectations in a consistent way with language. The goal is certainly to help our students navigate the hallways, the cafeteria, the playground, the bathrooms in an appropriate way, but equally in the classroom. And we know that, as you saw in some of the reports, the Search Institute, it's a little bit latent data because this is middle school and high school, and we certainly want to make interventions as early as we can. It all comes back to that book. If you go a few years ago, everything I needed to know I learned in kindergarten, such as don't throw sand in the sandbox, and how we play and interact with each other, those foundational skills at an early age are so, so critical and important. And we have teams that are being trained and implementing some initial efforts about positive behavior intervention supports. You'll notice in this school, as you walk around, you'll see some signage referencing that, and again, that's consistent within all the elementaries and on up through our district. We're continuing that effort. Hillcrest Elementary, another recognition of the back-to-school appointments, 99.3% attendance with 99.5% individuals reporting they were very satisfied or satisfied with the outcome. I think everybody's looking for that 0.5% because we want to figure out what we need to do, but that was great to see. And I think it's a real testament to that strategy. We implemented it a couple of years ago, and the feedback that I consistently receive is people appreciate the opportunity for personalized attention, one-on-one interactions with the parent, the teacher, and the student, and I think that just resonates in the survey results that you see. And again, you'll see the same thing in the Midary report, 325 students, and of those, only ten that were absent from the scheduled time, 76% being very satisfied, and 24% being satisfied. I think we can all do the math on what that meant. And again, a real celebration for those couple of days, and certainly something that we want to continue. Director Curriculum and Instruction Reports, you'll notice that alternative instruction options, there were some laws that were passed last year, and we are implementing this year. Dr. Vandewerdt, our Director of Curriculum Instruction and Continuous Improvement, works very closely with Amanda Kestaloot to help implement this process, and it's gone well so far, and we're continuing to work on that. And then the State Report Card is scheduled to be released sometime after October 14th. I envision we'll have some sort of report for the board at that point in time. And then the Director of Special Services, you can see that there have been a number of trainings for our staff, and again, echoing what I shared before with the staffing shortages. The staff training that we've emphasized this year have been some trainings on the Sande system, as well as Orton-Gillingham. Those are some real, very proven effective strategies for reading interventions with dyslexias, reading disabilities, and some deficits in reading. We also have implemented some Boy's Town training, and then different trainings to support de-escalation techniques for students and with special needs that may have some challenges with behaviors. So, we've implemented those as well. Moving ahead to the Director of Activities Report, a lot to celebrate in there, and I don't want to take away from what was shared and reported earlier, just want to reinforce it, what was shared by Mr. Boz in the report from the Bobcat Backers about Homecoming Week coming up. We're really excited about the opportunity to have a parade. There'll be dismissal on that Friday at 2:00 p.m., and again, we're not requiring everybody to attend, but we certainly want to give everybody the opportunity. And when you look at this search survey, they talk about connections to school. This is just another way that we can find and celebrate those connections. We encourage everybody to wear their red and black and get out and have a great homecoming celebration. Then you'll notice the names of some different individuals within our community for Hall of Fame recognitions. The 2020 list is there, as well as the 2021 list, and again, some familiar names there that we celebrate within our Department of Student Activities, not just athletics, but also other activities, including fine arts. In the Director of Child Nutrition Report, you'll notice that there's reference to having our elementaries, Hillcrest, Midary, Dakota Prairie, as well as Camelot, so our K-5 programs being selected to participate in the fresh fruit and vegetable program this year. So, each week, one fruit and one vegetable will be offered to all students in each of the participating schools. It's a program that has no direct cost to the students or their families. And then, national trends have been an issue with product availability. There's been some supply chain issues. Our Director of Child Nutrition has been working very closely with our providers to address product shortages, and again, being creative with some menuing options accordingly. Our Director of Instructional Technology and Knowledge Management emphasized a few things in there. They were busy this summer doing a lot of updating with new laptop equipment for our students. A couple of other things that have been actively occurring within the district, they're doing some assessments of our amplification systems that we implemented in some of the classrooms last year, and again, the positive feedback has been very strong. And then we are also implementing, as part of our new print management program, a software program called PaperCut, and it helps present to our staff that are using the printers, a reminder that if you would maybe try this versus this device, it may save on some costs. And again, we feel that that's going to be a positive thing for our district as we manage those resources and those assets. Director of Transportation, Buildings and Grounds, I don't think people really appreciate the magnitude of what happens, but over a thousand students are transported every day, and those learners are doing that on nine bus routes. In the past, we had eleven bus routes. That's why we had to make the transition. That's why we had to make the transition that we did with the changes to some of the in-town transfers. Again, as I said before at the beginning, if there are individuals that are listening or present that are looking for a part-time opportunity, we will certainly entertain you becoming a bus driver. And then Director of Business Services Report. The annual report has been accepted by the state. We're now in the midst of preparing for our audit, which is scheduled, as I understand it, Brian, September 27th through the 29th. I believe that's the date. We'll always bring in a couple of board members as we go through that finalized audit report. So again, watch for that information. And then you'll see some information as well attached from Ryan Bruner regarding the payouts from the Public Land Trust. It does appear to be down. So that's something that will impact schools a little bit, not as significantly. But again, just a point of reference there. I think that's all I have at this time. Certainly a lot of information to share. And that's not everything, but would stand ready for any questions, board members.
I have one question, Dr. Willard. I know that last year, we had that agreement with Beta to provide some transportation for individuals that where the bus route was not. And I think we're still continuing that if I'm, from what I've heard from some parents, is that correct?
Yeah, that's my understanding as well. I know that Nate Lor has been in close contact with Beta and working on different solutions like that. Beta has some challenges with staffing as well as I understand it. So again, we were trying to find all those options and share those.
But I just want parents to be aware. I know there were tokens available so that some of the families that maybe had limited resources could still have access to that transportation if the bus route didn't go near their home.
That's correct.
In regard to the auditing, would that be the Performance and Oversight Committee you imagine would need to be there?
Yes, that's what I would envision, yep.
Are there questions for Dr. Willard? All right, thank you. I will just add, I very much enjoyed all the photos of the activities and would. It is the funnest part of our agenda, let's be honest. So I would encourage that as well as any students coming in to speak to us. I just, I love that. I love hearing from our students saying what's going on and how things are going. So I would encourage that as well as we move forward into the rest of the year. So thank you for that. Next up, the Director of Business Services will report a financial overview of the previous month.
All right, just very briefly, I want to let the board know that I did put in the numbers for the advanced refunding of the middle school certificates. So they're in the capital outlay fund as well now. And then also, as happens every year, the expenses in the self-insurance fund are ahead of the revenues. And it should eventually correct itself in a couple of months. Other than that, unless there were any questions on the board bills, I didn't have too much to report on.
All right, thank you, Brian. Okay. Onto one of my favorite topics, policy. And I really mean that because I geek out for policy, I know. And everyone else is like, oh, policy. So we're going to go through a few different things. And just for the audience's awareness, we have started a goal that we, like Deb said earlier, that we want to try to get through our entire policy book in a one, three-year period. That has been an incredible undertaking. And I appreciate everybody who's really stepped up and taken the time to help us review. And then the ASBSD Associated School Boards has been very helpful in making sure that we're meeting all of our state statutes. And legally, all of our policies are correct and in sync and aren't contradicting each other. So you'll hear a lot of policies this evening. This is more normal for this year than previous years. So if you used to come to a board meeting and didn't hear a lot of policy and now you see an entire section on it, that's what we're up to there. All right, the first policy. This is the first reading of revisions being made to GCBE Vacation Holidays for Employees. This policy is under immediate review because we would like to add Juneteenth, excuse me, to the list of holidays. Any questions on this first reading? Next up, first reading of revisions being made to Policy G B E C Drug-Free Workplace. This contains new language related to school employees and medical cannabis and a definition of illegal drugs. And board members, I would recommend reviewing some of these pretty thoroughly as there are some significant recommended changes made by the ASBSD. Next up, J F C H Alcohol and Other Drug Use by Students. This expands language related to drugs in school. Next up, J H C D. This is Administering Medicines to Learners. This clarifies that a separate policy will govern the administration of medical cannabis, contains updated language regarding prescription medication labels. The ASBSD is also recommending that we adopt their consent form, which is J H C D dash E.
And just as a point of reference for the policy subcommittee, we have received some feedback from the school nurses that I'll bring to the committee when we meet on Friday. That has some points of clarification that they would like to see in the policy as well. So we have received some feedback on that one.
So watch for that. Next up, the first reading of new policy, J H C D E Administration of Medical Cannabis to Qualifying Learners.
And Melissa, just for clarification, that pretty much came from Associated School Boards directly, didn't it? Because we didn't have anything to go back to.
No, yep, those are completely new. Next one up is the first reading of revisions being made to Policy J E C B A Foreign Exchange Students. Does everyone have their windows up? All right, those were the first readings. We're now going to provide notification of review for a number of policies. The policy committee will be looking at these next set of policies. Review of new policy, I G D K Participation of Alternate Instruction Learners. So we're adopting ASBSD sample policy as it relates to changes made to homeschool participation law and how the homeschool student becomes and remains eligible to participate. Next is notification of review for new policy, J E A Compulsory Attendance Areas. We are adopting ASBSD sample policy on compulsory ages as it relates to alternate instruction changes in the law. Next is notification of review for Policy J E A A Learners Alternate Instruction. The amendments to this policy include the updated notification system, enrollment on a partial basis, and open enrollment. Notification of review of new policy, J E C A A Learners Enrolling from Alternative Instruction in Unaccredited Schools. The policy was impacted by the alternative instruction changes in the law. So there's a few suggested edits by the ASBSD. And notification of review for Policy J E E Learner Attendance. The policy was impacted by alternative instruction changes in the law. ASBSD is recommending that deletion of current policy language and replace with their sample policy language. Notification of review for Policy J E G Exemptions from School Attendance. This policy was impacted by the alternative instruction changes in the law. ASBSD recommends deletion of our current policy language and to replace it with their sample policy language. Notification of review of new policy, J E D Learner Absences and Excuses. This would be adopting ASBSD sample policy on learner absences and excuses. Right, that is our policy section. Next up, Superintendent will give an update on COVID-19 items.
Board members, I really don't have too much more to add other than what was shared last week, Thursday's special meeting that we held. We are continuing to monitor and continue to follow what's going on within our community as a whole. I do have pretty regular communications with the administrators of our different healthcare systems, including Jason Merkley, as well as Patrick Siegling and Amy Hockett. And just looking at different ways that we can continue to build awareness and communicate what's going on within our community. So really don't have too much more, like I said, other than what was shared last Thursday night.
All right, Superintendent will give an update of the facility plan progress.
And I'm actually going to pass the baton. Steve is here this evening, and this is the opportunity he's been waiting for. As was shared by Wes, Steve Janstrom is here representing Architecture Incorporated to give an update on where things are in terms of the facility planning progress. This is a little foretaste of what I envisioned we would spend some time focused on. As our Facility Subcommittee may recall, we talked about dedicating some time at our workshop meeting on the September 27th date for a little more in-depth evaluation review. But felt compelled to have Steve come this evening to give kind of a high-level overview of a few things that are occurring and the progress made thus far. So Steve, welcome.
Oh, yeah, there you go. Now it is. Thank you. Just to add a few comments to what Mr. Cheddar said and is that we've completed almost all of our interviews. There's just two interviews we have to complete of all of the community members and staff and teachers that we wanted to meet. We're now at the point where we're starting to finalize our ideas. And we've had some very good meetings with your facilities committee. And what we've determined here that we need a few more meetings to discuss what's our options. We're going to be doing extensive remodeling at Hillcrest and Madera. And now is the time to say, let's stop and let's think about what are our multiple options? Let's look at all possibilities. And that's what we're doing. We're right in the middle of that. We'll have a meeting with your facilities committee this week where we'll get into a lot more detail. And it is, as Dr. Willard mentioned, our intent to come to you in two weeks at your work session, board meeting on the 27th, and have a thorough discussion with you on what a lot of those options are and where we go from there and finalize kind of our time period for wrapping up this study soon. Where you as a board can make decisions based on input and community input and et cetera. So with that, I guess if you have any questions, but there's more to come. But now we're getting to the exciting part, frankly.
Board members, any questions for Steve?
I don't think at this time, but I'm sure we'll have some questions for you when we have our workshop meeting because we'll be focused primarily on.
Sure, yeah, that's our intent is to really have an extensive discussion at that time.
I think I would just add that quite a bit of effort has been put into data in terms of 10-year longitudinal review of enrollments, section sizes. So it isn't, this data so far isn't just in terms of what the condition Hillcrest is, Madera is. It's trying to give us some depth of on where enrollment trends might be, where we've been. And so it's, and this is not data that's, you know, magic out of the sky. This are pulling together data that exists, but putting it in a format that is consistent from one year to the next. And so this is really important work that's being done in the background until we, so far. And so this with that, I think just acknowledge that we haven't been done. There's been a lot of work haven't been done since about the 15th of July or thereabouts relative to the portal need as we move forward in terms of a decision and the public, of course.
All right, thank you.
And I don't have an umbrella for you, Steve.
Our tunnel's part of the architectural design. All right, next up, we have an action item. I need a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
I saw move. Second?
I second the motion.
Call the question. Motion passes. Item. 10.1 Approval of Donated Items. I need a motion and a second.
I motion we approve the donated items and thank you.
I second. And this appears to be an anonymous donation to our BHS football program of $5,000. That is a very generous donation. Thank you so much for that. Brian, can we call the question? Motion passes. The next item is approval of the 2021-2022 Project Search Handbook. Motion and a second.
Motion, we approve the Project Search Handbook for 2122. I second.
Very few changes this year. Any other additional information?
Just a brief comment because you may be wondering, well, why wasn't this one approved at the same time as others? If you recall, we did have a staffing change within our Director of Special Programs. And we also had a staffing change within the Project Search Leadership Program. So both of those individuals were able to work through the handbook and present it this evening, as you see. And it is recommended to approve.
Okay, call the question. Motion passes. Next item is motion of approval to schedule a special school board meeting to be held September 21st. Motion and a second.
I move approval of the 21st meeting, special meeting of the board.
Second by Wes, second by Kelly. Any additional information?
Just a comment that this is our annual board retreat. No action items are going to be on the agenda. It's really an opportunity for the board to gather together to review, pass goals, look forward to goals ahead, and talk about a few of the items that we need to discuss, such as our strategic planning processes and how we're going to proceed with that. So really just an opportunity for the board to collect together and work on some of those goal-related things.
Call the question, oh, sorry, Deb, did you have a question?
No.
Okay. Oh, okay, thank you, Brian. Motion passes. 10.4 is a motion of approval to allow the Brookings School District Foundation the option to facilitate the payroll function for a foundation executive director through the Brookings School District payroll processes. I saw move. Second?
I have a question.
I do too.
Is this an open-ended or is this, or did I miss something in terms of, is this an annual?
Is, is this an open-ended or is this, or did I miss something in terms of, is this an annual approval? Or what's the cycle that we're looking at here?
What it would be Wes, is allow the foundation to run the payroll through the school district. And there would be an in and out. And we're estimating it'd be about 25,000 a year.
No, my question is, is this for this year, next year, five years, three years? Or is this an annual approval?
I, I would envision once it's in, it'd be part of the annual budget process. When we present our budget, it'd be part of it. I believe eventually when the foundation gets bigger, they may be able to pick up the payroll on their own and process it their own. But right now at this time, it's just a little kinda difficult to do when they don't have everything.
I understand the rationale. I just wanna know, is this gonna be approved each year? I don't know if the budget is the right way to do it. Or is it for fiscal year '22, '23, '24? Is there, is there a period of time that we are envisioning this tonight as we approve this? Because I don't think it should be just open-ended for the, for, for, I won't say forever, but for many, many years. I think, I think this is, needs to come to the board as an approval item annually.
And we could sure do that in probably June. It would be for this year if they're on the, in the process right now, trying to get a director. So it would start this, hopefully this year, I would anticipate that. And then we sure could add it for, we couldn't, July the budget would be started. Probably May or June-ish, we'd probably wanna come to the board if you wanted a yearly approval.
You have all those approvals that we do at the July meeting and it could include into that.
The only flaw with that is unless it was a for sure yes, I don't know if they'd wanna be hanging out there that short of notice.
Aren't we just approving the ability for them to do payroll? We're not approving a budget item at this time, right? So we're just, we're just approving the ability for us, the function. We're not approving the position, the amount, any of those things, just the function, correct?
You're facilitating a process.
Yep. And we would bring a budget supplement as soon as we know the dollar amounts that'll be needed.
Call the question. Motion passes. Alright, next up is the selection of the 2021 Associated School Boards of South Dakota Delegate Certification.
I've been doing this last couple of years. Last year it was by Zoom, all going to peer for a meeting. It's very important that we're participating in this. And I'd be available unless somebody else wants to do it. Worth and I do, yeah. But it is, it is an important role for us to participate in.
I think you have the experience to serve in that role Wes.
Nobody wants to arm wrestle Wes for it?
Three hours plus windshield time, both in back, both in back.
So I think your motion would read that the board moves that Wes Cheddar would serve as the delegate for the Associated School Boards. And then you would have to suggest an alternative individual as well, who's the alternate. So to fill in that blank of the, of the motion.
Is it Van because he missed the meeting?
Sounds logical.
Sounds good to me.
No, that's not right, is it?
So I move that Wes serve in this capacity and that we select an alternate at our next meeting since Van isn't here. He may, he may be interested, but I think we should wait and let him have a say.
Do you need to know?
Can we do that or not, Dr. Willard?
I believe we're okay doing that. I don't have.
Cause we have the 21st. We could do it at the retreat meeting, correct?
I think we could if we need to, yep.
Yeah, okay.
Call the question.
A second.
Oh, sorry, I missed that.
I can second.
Kelly? Motion passes. Thank you Wes for volunteering your time. Alright, next up is a motion for approval to authorize the disposal of the surplus items by the appropriate means.
I move approval of the surplus item passes.
Second? Dr. Willard, do you wanna speak to any of this?
And I'll defer as well to Mr. Luters if need be. But as you see the list attached, there has been a preliminary walkthrough by our firm that we've utilized in the past to handle the auction. And their thought is that we would actually lose money if we ran an auction this year. So the idea is to declare these items surplus, make it known. And we'll work to communicate out that people can stop by the facility and, and pick through it. And then if, if need be, we'll dispose of it accordingly. But right now, there, there is no intent to operate an auction just because of the low valuation of the items that are on the list. Brian, anything you care to add?
Questions from the board? Call the question. Motion passes. 10.7, this would be a motion of approval to move from Phase 1 to Phase 2 of the Bobcat tracks back to the classroom plan.
You, are you waiting for a motion? Do you wanna have a presentation by Superintendent Willard first? Or what's, what's the process you're looking at?
Normally we do a motion and second to get to discussion. But if we need more information before, I am not hearing.
Just, I'm asking what you wanna do.
I'm not hearing a motion or a second, so it will die for lack thereof unless.
I, I can make a few brief comments and it'll echo much of what you heard last Thursday night. You'll notice that this is a reflection of our new revised Bobcat tracks plan, just as a, as a refresher for everybody. Phase 1 is effectively where we're at right now. Phase 2 is stepped up to, to recognize that there is increased spread within our community as a whole. Has the language going from mass voluntary to strongly recommended. With that, that does align to some of the language that we've noted from the city as well. When we look at this from a, a more community-wide perspective. And then Phase 3 is in place. That is where we operated for, I guess really for the entire year last year, which was the mask requirement. At this time, there's not a recommendation to move to that phase. The recommendation is to move to Phase 2 of strongly recommend masks. And certainly we'll continue to inform our practice based upon what's happening relative to the three factors that were mentioned before. I'll restate those again. These are the same three factors that we gauged last year as, as we had our plan. And really the only thing that changed from our plan last year, and I think it's important to point this out, is we removed the hybrid option. And the rationale for removing the hybrid option is quite frankly, as we, our team evaluated the prospects of moving to hybrid, it's not very likely. And when you look at what has been found in data across the country relative to moving to and from a hybrid model, it is extremely challenging for learners and extremely difficult for staff. That has been a universal feedback when you look at, at what's happened in other places across the country that navigated a hybrid model. So that's why it was recommended in, in the action last Thursday to remove the hybrid section from the plan, shift our Phase 2, which would have been the mask requirement, over to Phase 3. And then have this Phase 2, which has stepped up efforts relative to the, the strongly recommend a mask. And also, like I said, some of the increased efforts with sanitization and, and cleaning, et cetera. So that is what is recommended this evening. And again, we're continuing to monitor three factors, spread in the community, impact in the school, and impact in our local healthcare system.
I will move that we move from Phase 1 to Phase 2 of the Bobcat tracks plan so that we can have some discussion because I think there are some things I would like to share. But I need a sec, we need a sec.
I'll second that.
Alright, discussion. Did you wanna start Deb?
I, I just wanna start by saying that the community is split. There's no doubt about it. I received hundreds of emails and it's, you know, we had more here speaking on one side tonight. That's not the way the emails went. The emails were pretty much half and half or 60/40 in favor of having a mask mandate. 60/40 would probably about where it would be. You know, our board I think is split in somewhat of our opinions. But I respect everyone and their opinion. And I care about our kids. I care about our staff. I want everyone to be safe. And when you have a situation like this, for me, I listen to people, but you end up confused because you've got all these different viewpoints that you're hearing. So who do you turn to? Well, I have to turn to medical professionals because this is a health issue. It's a public health issue. If I am sick, I go to my doctor and I trust that my doctor will do everything she can for me. And so in this instance, I feel that same way. And the doctors are telling us we should be doing more. We should have a mask mandate. So for, for me to move from Phase 1 to Phase 2 is minimal because I don't know that strongly recommend is gonna change anybody's behavior. I really don't. It's my opinion. I hope that it does. I hope that more people wear masks. But I've also heard that kids are being treated unfairly if they wear a mask. You know, I just want everyone to respect each other. That's what I think is the most important aspect of this. We don't have to agree. We don't agree on a lot of things, you know? I'm a Minnesota Vikings fan. Unfortunately, a lot of people don't agree with me on that either. But we have to look at how we can come to conclusions where we can live together. So whatever action is taken by the board, I will support it. So that's just my feelings. I really would, would advocate that we move to Phase 3, but I don't think there's support for that from the board. I'm hoping that there is support for Phase 2. And I do wanna hear from our staff. I wanna hear that feedback and see where they're at. But I, from what I've gathered, I think they're pretty well split as well. Maybe not in the same percentages, but I really would like to hear back from them. And maybe we would look at moving to another phase. But when you look at the numbers, it, it's confusing because, yeah, percentage-wise at the school. But if we know that the kids aren't being tested, that doesn't really tell us anything in terms of the numbers. And, you know, I've heard about vaccines. I have family members who were crippled by polio before the vaccine was developed. And so I believe a vaccine can have a huge impact. So that's just my two cents. But I'm so, I've been agonizing over this for a long time as Kelly knows because she'll call me to see if I'm okay. Cause I just worry about what we're doing and how, if our kids are safe and our, our staff is safe. And we can disagree about that, but I think we all want that. We all want our kids and our staff to be safe. How we go about it, we can disagree.
Other thoughts by the board?
I guess I was a little, I just wanted Clint to maybe touch on the contact tracing. I have some questions on that because I think the policy we approved, I guess, had a different graphic unless I was following things differently than what's on our website now. So I don't know.
The web, the website has the.
Correct.
The correct information that reflects everything that was discussed and reflected in the newspaper article. What was, what was referenced, I believe, was an old plan document that didn't have the changes. We didn't have the newest one uploaded because we did have a couple of individuals that worked specifically with our website communication that had some planned time off on Friday. So now that's all up and reflecting everything. So it does reflect, I believe the question, as I understand it, may relate to if you have a COVID, positive COVID test that's been demonstrated, or you can demonstrate your vaccination, that that would impact what you're doing with your close contact recognition.
And then a mask, right?
And, and if you're masked, yep, correct.
The third one says we're consistently improperly wearing a mask throughout the entire day, then you are not considered a close contact. Cause that's not, I'm not trying to be hard, but that's not what we, right? Is that the document we were voting on?
That was the intent, yes. That was the intent.
Okay. But that wasn't the one we looked at that night then?
Believe it was, but I may, I may be, may be wrong. I can go back and check with our staff. But if we, if we feel that that's necessary to restate that again, we certainly can. If that needs to be pushed up clear.
And I talked about this last time. I just, again, back to the time taken from the contact tracing. And I just, I want your recommendation on how you're feeling about the contact tracing time. Is it effective? Is it working? Is it helping? I want, I want children in school. People can think, I think, both ways about that. But I just want some reflections on the contact tracing and those guidelines.
Yeah, great, great question. A little bit that I will share right now is purely anecdotal from what I observe. I believe our, our best person to respond to that would be Dr. Vandewerdt. Dr. Vandewerdt, as you've heard me reference in the report this evening, is our Director of Curriculum Instruction and Continuous Improvement. She is hardly doing any of those duties today. And we're an educational institution. She is spending a significant amount of time interfacing with the South Dakota Department of Health, with building-level administrators, with nurses to go through this process of contact tracing. I believe it's important that we do that because it helps us monitor what's happening within our community. I know you may be getting some different reactions based upon your, your eye contact out here. But that's, that's why we're doing what we're doing. We believe that it adds value to the discussion as we're monitoring what's happening within our school system. It goes back to one of those three legs of the stool that I've mentioned before. I envision that we will bring forward a recommendation to the board about contact tracing to provide some support. We do have funding available yet through ESER. We are asking for some clarification to what extent we have to go through the whole process that we did last time of posting, sharing, getting feedback and communications. We are also meeting with all of the nurses, the entire administrative team is meeting with all of the nurses this Wednesday to talk about some of the processes, procedures, et cetera, that we have in place relative to contact tracing. So I don't know if I'm answering your question or not Kelly, but, but it is taking a significant amount of time. But it is with the same goal that we wanna keep as many kids in school as possible for as long as possible because we know the value of that face-to-face instruction. And I know from visiting with teachers individually that that's exactly what I've heard.
And then your plan is to get us that feedback from the nurses and that team to.
Correct.
And Dr. Willard, you, you said that you're making, you know, the recommendation was made to move from Phase 1 to Phase 2. Is that recommendation coming from administration? And will next, you know, at our, who is gonna make the decision to even make that recommendation? Is what I'm saying, do either go forward or move back? How are we, how are we gonna determine that?
Yeah, great question. For those that work, work most closely with me and, and I know that any one of them could take this mic and say this, and I know they would. It is a team decision that we'll bring forward. The team takes input from the buildings. We have, we have the principal advisory councils that should be interfacing and having that discussion. Our principals talk to their nurses daily, multiple times throughout the day. There's a lot of discussion that happens there. I know like I shared, Dr. Vandewerdt is in contact with the nurses as well as the building administrators on a regular basis. So there, there is a lot of that type of communication through, I would say, more informal channels. And that would all be brought together. We would, we would assess what's going on, our full team, and then bring forward a recommendation to the board accordingly. And we would, as, as I shared before, last Thursday as a, as a refresher, we would expect a little bit of a latent response. bit of a latent response then, because as you make a change, we don't want to do what's happened in some states, for example, where a change is made at midnight, and you're expected to implement that change at 7:30 in the morning when you're opening school doors. That's impractical. Nobody else would do that. So our recommendation would be made. We would discuss it at the board table, have input from our public, obviously. That's what we're about. And then make the, make the move with maybe a day delay to allow for a time to make the transition. That answer your question?
It does. And then do you anticipate that we'll have the feedback from the staff, maybe by our September 21st retreat?
Let me look at my calendar real quick, yeah.
A week and one day.
As we're looking at the dissemination of the survey, our goal is to have it out by tomorrow afternoon or Wednesday at the latest. I would envision we would have to shorten the timeline in which we get the feedback back, because I just, we want to put it in some sort of a presentation-type format, obviously. So we could, we could, boy, that would be really tight. Again, like I said before, it's tight. I would envision by the 27th, we could have that in a very nice, meaningful format, again, giving everybody ample time to respond. But if you want it by the 21st, we would just have to shorten the window up to maybe two days to gather that input, so that then we have, we could even go over the, well, even over the weekend would be tough. I would say we'd probably look at closing that on Friday, the 17th, so this Friday. I would, I would advocate for having that presented to the board at the workshop meeting on the 27th. Or earlier, if they're so inclined to have a special meeting.
So just clarifying, teachers can get their feedback to their principals, who get their feedback to you, which then comes to us.
Correct.
When we, when we were talking about the plan, it was, I was under the impression we had teacher feedback from that plan. So that, and that's, I just want people to know, that was the impression I was under, because I've gotten feedback that, that, you know, we're voting and we don't care what the teachers think. That's the impression that I have received and why I was voting the way I was, is that I felt that that, that feedback loop was open.
Our principals bring forward their concerns relative to their buildings. I believe our principals have a good pulse on what's going on within their buildings. I have confidence and trust and faith that they do. That's why they're hired to do the job that they're asked to do, and they bring it forward to the full administrative team. We are a large enough district that, that for me personally, to sit down with, with each individual teacher, it's very impractical. But I do sit down with our BEA leadership on a monthly basis, sometimes more frequently. And that's been a very, very candid conversation when we've had issues and concerns. So we actually have a meeting scheduled for next Monday. I'll be sitting down with, with the BEA leadership. So it is, we have multiple ways that we communicate in the district. We have multiple ways that we can gather input in the district, and what you described is, is a key function of our communications strategies and approaches in the district.
But I do think, Dr. Willard, the opportunity for this survey is a morale builder with our staff, and I think that's so important, because this has been, it's a rough situation for everybody. And so I think, I appreciate the extra work, because I know it is extra work for everyone involved, but I do appreciate that, and I think it's, it's a way to, you know, help with the morale at all of our, all of our buildings.
And I would agree with that completely. I think it's very important that we get that feedback and that input, because when you look at what's happening across the country, and I'll go back to comments that I made earlier in my report, I am very concerned about our profession. Very concerned about our profession. I believe we're beginning to take advantage, or take, take for granted the time, the energy, and the effort that our professional educators put in each and every day to make a difference in the lives of our kids. When you go back to then, I'm, I've lived through a double suicide. Who do the parents call on when that happens? It's the teachers. It's the teachers. We need to remember that. We need to remember that they are part of our community as much as anybody. And again, I think it's very important that we recognize, Deb, what you shared earlier as well, that while our community is divided, I know our staff is divided. I'm not going to sugarcoat it. I know our staff is divided. I know our community is divided. Our state's divided. Our country's divided. But we have a choice in how we navigate this together, and that's what we have to end up doing. And I know I've received a few shots, because we had a very uplifting and positive start to the school year with our back-to-school event, as you heard me reference on Thursday night. We had our administrators dancing on stage in front of hundreds of staff members. We didn't need to do that, but we felt it was important, because we wanted to start the year with a positive approach to give everybody's minds a break from this thing that we've been navigating the last three school years. And I'm not going to apologize for that. Our mistake's going to be made as we go through this process, absolutely, but it's not for lack of trying. So with that being said, I stand by the recommendation that we have forward to the board this evening, but also understand that our heads aren't in the sand. Our ears are listening to everybody, everybody. Nobody's being paid off. Nobody's being bribed. Nobody's being coerced. We're doing the best we can with the information that we have at this given time. And we also live with the reality that we do not make our decisions in a political vacuum, nor do you as board members. And I know what I'm saying may not be popular to some, but I'm not going to apologize for saying what I believe needs to be said. We are making the best decisions we can at the time that we can, and we will continue to do so in a tireless fashion, because that's what we were asked to do. And I'm not going to apologize for being a champion for our teachers and for our staff. I think they are putting in an inordinate amount of time and energy, and there's a tremendous amount of anxiety. I look across our staff members, and I see a level of weariness that I typically see in the months of February or March. It's September. It's September. I would challenge everybody in this room, present, watching, instead of poking holes in each other, and I'm asking this for myself as well, why don't we find a way to lift each other up? I put out a very innocent tweet Saturday morning, saying, how do you, how do you respond in a nimble way with taking feedback? And we're experiencing that. I had people troll me from this community that taunted my tweet, so I deleted it. It was an honest question. That doesn't solve problems. You can either be part of the solution or part of the problem. Pick. Finished.
All right, I do have one last question, Dr. Willard. How will this be communicated? If we move, if we do move to phase two tonight, how will that be?
It'll be splashed immediately on our district webpage, so when people go to visit, they'll see it. I know we have media present this evening. I have a slated call tomorrow afternoon with the media, and I have my radio show tomorrow as well.
I just want to say that last Thursday, last Thursday's meeting tonight, I think the community as a whole needs to be commended. We've had a civil, civil discourse. We've had a civil exchange. I realize not everybody's going to agree with everybody. It's just, it's just the way it is. I've read dozens upon dozens. I even read form letters. There were 10 or 15 form letters, guys close to 15 came across my desk saying the same thing, and, and opposing masks. And so I don't feel threatened. I don't feel like I've been bribed. I simply trying to approach this from a rational decision. That's why I supported the motion last Thursday, and why tonight I support going to phase two. We'll watch, we'll watch the data. We have leadership in our, in our organization that'll, that'll look at the data and come back with, if there's any changes, and I'm confident of that. And, and while we don't, may not all agree, we still have 3,500 students to care about, and, and it won't, including dozens, several dozens, who probably are unfortunately, in terms of contracting COVID. But they'll, it's just, it's just, I can't say anymore, because I can't, can't fully express all my feelings about this. So with that, I want to thank the community for acting civilly. And even though we look out in the audience, and there's some rolled eyes and some, some non-verbal gestures, it's not in human nature, so thank you.
Something I've talked to people about is that when we approved a very similar version of this plan last year and the plan we have now, it was built on this idea of proportional response. And giving us the ability to move as we needed to, if we needed to, to ensure that all of our students and staff were safe and cared for, and that we were being responsible to our community. I think it's part of the challenge is that it doesn't work very well with the idea that some people would like to have a guarantee of one or the other. And where the divide is, a request to guarantee no masks for the whole year, or to guarantee masks for the whole year, a concept that just hasn't fit with how our plan is designed for us to be able to move and adapt and be flexible and agile. It's been probably one of the proudest moments I've had in Brookings recently, to be able to hear verbally from our community and how we've responded to this challenge together. If you've watched some other communities, Brookings can be proud. It's very important to me that we keep an open dialogue as we move forward. It's very important to me that everybody has the right to speak publicly and share their thoughts and opinions. And we want to work with you as a collaborative partner and, and get through what I certainly hope will be, as they've described this variant, short and sweet, a very steep incline, and then a very steep drop-off, is what I'm hearing from folks at Sanford and, and Nibera. And if that were true, there's a potential for us to move through this relatively quickly. But I do want to thank our community. Thank you for reaching out. Thank you for all the emails. Thank you for showing up for us. We do feel a lot of support, and it is greatly appreciated. Are there any other discussion points before we call a question? Brian? Motion passes. Our last item, I need a motion of approval for adjournment.
I second that.
By Wes, second by Deb. Call the question? I'm assuming no discussion about adjournment? No. Motion passes. Thank you, everyone, for coming out. Appreciate it.